Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the October regular Board meeting to order. If everybody would please stand and join us in the closing of the evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Chair moves for approval of the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Announcements. October 27th is a public advocacy test, 4:30, in ESC Community Room. November 4th is a general election for school board. November 7th is the quarterly teaching and learning meeting, 7:30, in the ESC Conference Room A. And November 10th, policy meeting at 5:30 in Conference Room A. And a board meeting to follow at 6 o'clock. Are there any members of the public that wish to address the board? Okay, that being said, we'll move on to the student rec report. Welcome, you guys.
Thank you. Well, hello. I'm Edie Hollenstein.
I'm Dr. Phil.
And we hope you're all doing very well. Obviously, a big event for us recently was homecoming at the high schools. That was the week of September 29th to October 4th. The senior girls did crush the juniors in the Powerpuff game on the Sunday to start off the week, the score being 158 to nothing. That's the best, the biggest discrepancy we've had, brought senior right here. So, and then the class of 2026 celebrated and started off their senior year on the Monday of that week with their senior sunrise. And we also attended the middle school pep fest on Monday, which was emceed by George and myself, and attended by the 2025 Homecoming Court, fall sports captains, and our very own cheer team.
And then finally, on Friday, we ended the week with festivities. Obviously, I started off with the alumni breakfast, which we had 225 alumni go into, which is amazing. It's actually spectacular to see all the people come back. And then the high school pep fest featured the coronation of homecoming king and queen, Teresa Bray and Sean Dolder. They beat me. It's okay. So, I learned this whole. A performance from the Hot Cats dance team came, and then more things like Mr. Heber and Ms. Barnes were regarded as the mixing spoons. The parade was also a big success. We had 20 groups coming in. We went down the normal route this year, which we might switch up next year. The homecoming carnival saw the best attendance in a very long time. And there's other things going on. And then finally, we ended the week with the dance on Saturday night.
And then going into some sports reports. Both girls and boys soccer seasons were unfortunately ended in sections. The boys actually did receive their highest seed they have in a really long time, even the second seed in their section, and they were able to host two section games, which was awesome. And then girls volleyball will play at Jordan for the first round of sections on Wednesday.
And then football team will actually have their first section game tomorrow at 6 against Providence Academy. It's the best of luck to them. Swims and dives received their second-best true state team, which is awesome. And then cross-country has been holding a very successful study season, which is great as well. And then winter sports are beginning very soon here with dance team actually starting today, which is awesome. So, sports are going very well at the moment. On the art side of things, all we have at the moment is the Fall Musical Chicago. Has begun the rehearsals, but we're still waiting on the dates for that at the moment. Moving into academics, MEA just finished, and everyone is working hard at the school before the end of the quarter. Some turnarounds are going to be made on my grid. And then the high school activity fair was also today, where we had many clubs and leaders coming out to encourage other students to join new clubs.
And then finally, just for some construction updates on the student side of things. We have been learning in the new spaces as they give us much more operating opportunities to collaborate and work effectively. I personally have been really taking advantage of all of our new spaces, like the breakout rooms, they're private, they're quiet. It's great to get some work done. And then we've also, the construction has also kind of continued throughout the school day, but has not been disrupting whatsoever to students, I think. I mean, maybe some sounds here and then, but I mean, we haven't experienced any major issues with that, so, yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for your question. All right. Now, we're going to move on to the HOSA presentation. Good evening. Thanks for having us here tonight. I'm here with Oliver Berg, Amelia Holmberg, and Ruby Smith. And these three students reached out in July and said, "We'd like to sit down and meet and talk about starting a new club." And I said, "Awesome. Ms. Herple handles all the clubs." And so, I was at the meeting, but as we talked more, realized that this isn't a club. This is more of a school activity, same similar to DECA. And so, we talked about a lot of different hurdles that would be in front of us at the moment and said, "Hey, let's just kind of wait. Let's maybe start this next year." Well, between Oliver and Amelia and Ruby, they're very persistent. We continued to meet and talk about how we might get started. And we needed an advisor, so you're looking at that person here right now. Ms. Herple said, "We need somebody that has some experience in the medical field." And I said, "That's me. I used to be a high school health teacher, and so I can start this out. I can get this going." So, I'm going to turn it over to these three. This arrow here is trying to move from slide to slide, so.
Okay, I'll start by introducing myself. I'm Oliver Berg. I'm a sophomore here at West Tonka High School. I am a DECA officer. I am a Student Senate Executive, and I also do gymnastics.
I'm Amelia Holmberg, and I'm a sophomore. And I'm involved in the Student Senate. I'm a board member of Girl Up and Crafting Home. I'm a part of DECA Dance Team, and I'm a tennis manager.
I'm Ruby Smith. I'm also a sophomore, and I'm involved in Student Senate, DECA, Dance Team, track and field, and this year I was a volleyball manager.
So, you may be thinking, "What is HOSA, and why are we here with you guys today?" HOSA is medical professionals for students to, it is a naturally recognized career path for students and is for helping the better of students and learning about the medical field and how they can better prepare themselves for the future and see what is truly involved in the healthcare field. The organization offers educational programs, community outreach, and competitive events.
As a group, we are all fascinated with the medical field. Amelia's parents are both involved in the medical field, and her brother is also deciding to go into the path of medical field. My mom is a nurse, so I was always surrounded by that growing up. And so, it was, it's an interest to me to go into that for my profession. And then Oliver thought saving lives and being involved in people's journeys was fascinating. So, we all have some sort of connection to the medical field and all aspirations to eventually going into the medical field someday.
Okay, so why should you guys approve HOSA? We're going to start with the learning aspect of it. Students get the opportunity to learn about being prepared, which will help them learn about their future careers. This doesn't just apply to medical field careers. The skills you can get from HOSA can apply to any career you want.
Leading, students have the opportunity to be on the board for HOSA, the state HOSA board, and also they just get opportunities to involve with other students and lead in that way around HOSA.
HOSA also is, has a lot of involvement. Students get to interact with other students at different schools, and people in the medical field at the competitions. People will be collaborating and actively working as medical professionals, so students can have a chance of making connections and networking.
Some of the benefits to students, the main benefit is the skills that kids will get. I already talked a little bit about it, but mainly soft skills kids will be getting, as well as communication skills, collaboration skills. All the different events the kids can participate in really help build up confidence within them as well, which is really important to their futures.
So, we appreciate your time listening to our presentations. So, does anybody have any questions?
Mr. Peterson made the reference that kind of similar to DECA, with you being also involved in DECA. Are you choosing a project, then, where you bring a project to district, regions, et cetera, where you're competing in that area with students from other HOSA programs and other districts? Is that kind of how it works?
Yeah, I can answer that one. So, it's very similar to DECA in that aspect. There are different sections of competition, I guess. But separate from DECA, there's like, in HOSA, different conferences that you can attend that are specifically for leadership. With DECA, it's just competition-based, but with HOSA, there's different aspects, like coming up towards the end of October, there's a Fall Leadership Conference that we're hoping to attend, and it's just about networking and learning about healthcare. And then when it comes to actual competitions, it's less like preparing, like how with DECA, you prepare a presentation beforehand. That does happen in HOSA, but a lot of the events are focused on like, in the moments, like, can you perform CPR on this dummy, or can you wrap this ankle?
These are pretty much all healthcare-related, though, projects or exercises that you would have to be involved in.
Yes.
So, for me, the obvious question is with the remodeling redesign we're doing, we're adding courses in EMT and Nurse Assistant. How do you see the HOSA? To me, it seems like a great connection. How do you see it paralleling, complementing, meshing with the classes that we're going to be doing? Does that make sense?
I can answer that one. So, basically with DECA, they have marketing classes where you can work on some of your DECA projects through the class. And basically, you can do that with the EMT programs. You can learn how to do CPR, wrap an ankle, put on some bandage that is really adhesive to the skin, and you will basically learn all these styles for HOSA that will impact it.
Just give me a brief rundown. For instance, you know, you're starting, it's new, you've got to hit the ground running. How to get like-minded members? Where are you going to meet? How are you going to fundraise? What projects you want to start this first year? First year is kind of critical, I would imagine.
Yeah, I can do this one. So, this first year is pretty developmental for us. We're just, we're preparing ourselves for, to opening up to the school next year, for sure. We did participate in the activities there today, and a lot of people seemed interested in that. So, they were, we already do have a pretty good group of kids that is already interested and that we know is interested. And we do have our board pretty set in stone right now. We have reached out to some students, and we have met with them, and they're willing to help us with the developmental stage of.
So, this year, you're kind of in a rollout phase, and then next year, you're going to be in the full swing for your yearly activities?
Yes.
And like you said, you're hoping to go to the Leadership Conference later this month, right?
Yeah, exactly.
I assume part of that will be learning how to set up a site here.
Yeah, and we have a representative from the Minnesota Board of It that we've been in contact with, and they're kind of giving us different documents that we can use to help build like bylaws and other things like that that will really help us start up the chapter.
How, I haven't, honestly, I haven't heard this. My problem. But like, how extensive is this? How many high schools have this? I mean, what's the size of the scope of this? Is it a national thing, state thing, regional thing?
Your journey, anyway. That's your journey. So, right now, yes, there's many, many high schools in Minnesota. The number, I'm not, I don't know, but it's a high number. But across the nation, there's over 250,000 HOSA members, and that's student members. So, also to kind of go back to your, just to your question a little bit, as an interim advisor, the, our goal is, is to really create kind of a good base or a structure for this year, so as we move into next year, which is also really important with our, with our new classes that we're offering, to be able to connect with potentially that teacher, to implement some of the opportunities that could present themselves at a HOSA competition. And really, there's three components with HOSA. There's really, there's the competition, then there's a service component, which is awesome, and then there's the leadership component. So, if approved, we're planning to attend a Leadership Conference on the 31st. Where is that? St. Cloud?
Eden Prairie?
Oh, Eden Prairie.
The St. Cloud was the state.
Yeah.
Okay, so to just go and network and see what some other schools are doing and figure out how they're building that program. These three did reach out and create a Google form that we sent out over SchoolAG to kind of gather other interests, and had some decent numbers, but also want to try to kind of control that initially to a group that can help create bylaws and all of those types of things to kind of get us set up in a good spot. So, moving into fall of 2026, we're in a good spot to be able to kind of hit the ground running. Yeah.
I know that there's been a lot of comparisons with DECA. Do you, is there a risk that people will choose HOSA over DECA?
Good question. Maybe I can answer that one. But then you could answer what you might choose. But right now, we offer so many programs. It is, it's incredible. Thank you for creating the opportunities for kids. What happens is, is we work incredibly hard with our advisors to be able to work with kids who want to do more than one thing, so they can have just a broad experience. And so, it's not like you have to choose one over another. You know, speech, DECA, Science Olympiad, Math League, it's, the opportunities are almost endless. And so, it really feels like the same type of culture would be within this program. Obviously, the leader of the program has to be able to be flexible and collaborate in building those things. But I think it, I think kids could participate in both.
And they're both sort of a different direction. I mean, business and marketing versus medical and that type of thing. So, it might be that the first thing there might be right for some person while the other one isn't, so.
What if it's business, marketing, and medical? I work in the medical device industry. So, I've been kind of thinking, is there any, is there anything related to that? But if there is, you guys can always reach out. I'm happy to connect you to companies, physicians, things, if you want to have interviews, meetings, things. You can contact me. Contact me. I can help you.
That'd be perfect. Thank you.
Say that, again, we tried to put this group off in July, and they just kind of kept coming back, knocking down, knocking down hurdles, and just kept on working, so.
But what date do you need to know with the conferences, so?
We have it in the, do we have it in motion?
Yeah, we'll prove it. Okay, good. I, I know I speak for everyone in this room that this is student-led, gives us a ton of pride. We know that you guys are really busy. Just reading what you're involved in this fall is really impressive. It speaks to what Mr. Peterson just said of doing a lot of different things. But this program's important, and to find one kid's interest to let them work with those outside of class. But it's also really important in our community that kids do develop interests in this area. And so, it's exciting. Love that it's student-led. Nice job.
Thank you. Thanks for having us. Next, we'll move on to the Churros Report, Ralph.
We're going to do two months today, August to September, with the Gillette August School. Mount American Legion, programs SEHC, $1,500. Various Hilltop families, Hilltop Primary School, $1,650. Peter Marsh Foundation, WMS Band, $1,680. Various WHS families. West Tonka High School Student Support, $1,360. Ohio File Inc., West Tonka Activities, $25.98. NW Tonka Lions, West Tonka Community Theater, $5,000. NW Tonka Lions, Music in the Park, $2,500. Anonymous, West Tonka Friends of the Arts, $35. Wona West Tonka Soccer Club, OWSC Soccer Scholarship, $2,000. Butch Humbert, Larry Excel Memorial Scholarship, $100. Long Lake Fire Department, Long Lake Fire Department Scholarship, $1,000. Black Ball Giving Fund, Captain's Club, $20. Travis Hansbrurer Wrestling Club, $500. Going on to September. Various Hilltop families, Hilltop Primary School, $290. Shirley Hills VTO, Shirley Hills Primary School, $14,280. Various WHS families, West Tonka High School Student Support, $275. John Stevenson Junior Estate, Jeff Stevenson Memorial Scholarship, $5,000. Butch Humbert, Larry Excel Memorial Scholarship, $100. Black Ball Giving Fund, Captain's Club, $40. IBIS LLC, West Tonka Dance Team, $500. Anna Almas, West Tonka Dance Team, $500. Rock Van Boat Yards, West Tonka Dance Team, $500. West Tonka Animal Hospital, West Tonka Dance Team, $100. Travail LLC, West Tonka Dance Team, $500. Mount Family Hardware, West Tonka Dance Team, $100. JDP Electric, West Tonka Dance Team, $500. Pyrocractor Inc., West Tonka Dance Team, $150. And Wedshy, West Tonka Dance Team, $500. And finally, Magic Taylor, West Tonka Dance Team, $100. We appreciate all of the donations made to the school and its programs and its students, and board members, and chair. I've looked at the check ledger and various supporting documents, and all seems to be in order.
Thank you, Ralph. Are there the school board committee reports, anybody? If not, then we'll move on to financial report, guys.
Good evening, board. I'll be sharing this month's budget overview and enrollment update with you this evening. Let's get into this enrollment. Month number one of the school year is in the books. And this slide shows how our October 1st enrollment compares to last year's final numbers and also how it compares to our budgeted projections. Each of the clusters are great, great different grade levels. And then on the final column on the right is the total of all three of the grade levels displayed. The red bar is our final enrollment counts as of last school year. The middle bar in black represents our budgeted assumption. And the gray shows our October 1st count, 2025. So, as of October 1st, we are 31, serving 31 students more than the prior school year. And we are 40 students over what we had planned in our adopted budget. The student enrollment is the primary driver of our revenue, and so we will continue to closely monitor the enrollment numbers throughout the school year. And in the coming months, we will incorporate any necessary adjustments into our revised budget. Right, financial data through September 30th, 2025. We have received $5,522,000 for 12.8% of our adopted budget. And we have expended $8,539,000 for 20% of our adopted expenditure budget. Both the revenue and expenditures are trending on track compared to the previous two years. Just a couple other items to note. Last month, you approved the levy. Those were submitted both to our county auditor and the Minnesota Department of Education at Maximum by the September 30th deadline. And we will be holding our truth and taxation hearing with the final numbers at the beginning of our December, regular meeting on December 8th. And on your agenda tonight is an action item to approve the budget. And all school districts are required to publish our budget following the, one week following the approval, which you'll do this evening. And so, you will see that displayed in Saturday's edition of The Laker. And at this time, I'd like to introduce Aaron Dahl of Bergen KDB. He will be presenting a summary of the '24-'25 audit. And on behalf of the West Tonka School District, I'd like to thank Aaron for being here tonight and to his team for their professional nature and customer service. Bergen KDB shares similar goals and values of being good stewards of public dollars
All right, thanks, Kathy. Thank you, board, for the opportunity to present here tonight and the opportunity to serve as your district's auditors again for fiscal year '25. We'll start with the independent auditors report. So, the first one relates to the financial statement opinion, which we issued an unmodified opinion, which is the best opinion we can give as auditors. With that, we're stating that the district's basic financial statements, which comprise the governmental activities, each major fund, and the aggregate remaining funded information, as clean or unmodified. With that, we provide reasonable assurance that the financial statements do present fairly in all material respects, the financial position, change in financial position of the governmental activities and each major fund and the aggregate remaining funds. And also note here, we have the federal program report and compliance and internal control. The federal government actually hasn't issued the 2025 compliance supplement yet, so we're unable to issue our full report related to that single audit. But we can share that we did take a look at the special education federal program for fiscal year '25, didn't find anything of note. But that report will need to be dated separately based on the delay there in the compliance supplement. We also issued a report related to the government auditing standards. We did note one material weakness and then one significant deficiency in internal control. That deficiency relates to the lack of segregation of accounting duties, so something you've seen in prior years as well, just kind of that overlap in duties related kind of the initiation, recording, the processing, and the reporting of the financial data. So, and I always like to point out, it's not usually cost efficient to have that complete segregation of duties, but we still find it important. Resident ADM, so kind of that middle line there, that does include all residents who are enrolled in the district, those educated in other districts which tuition is paid, or those under open enrollment options. So, you'll see the difference between those bottom two lines there. The total ADM served, that's kind of the more important number, I guess, the one that Kathy was looking at as well. That's the one that your student aides are based upon. So, as you can see, there's a bit of a decrease between the two. That relates to open enrollment, so there still are some open enrollment losses with the district, but pretty steady there. Taking a look at that resident ADM number, that did decrease by just three, so 0.1%, so pretty stable compared to fiscal year 2024. That total ADM served number actually increased by about 11 or 0.5%. So, again, a little bit less of a loss in open enrollment for fiscal year '25. Kind of taking a look at the five-year trends here, we have that in graphical form here as well. So, pretty steady over the past five years, especially the past four. You'll see both the resident ADM and the ADM served have remained pretty stable, which is commendable for a district. Kind of taking a look at that five-year trend, a decrease of about 25 in that ADM served number since 2021. Next, we'll jump into the general fund and the sources of revenue here for the past five years. Overall, for fiscal year 2025, the general fund revenues increased by about 4.4 million or 11.2% compared to the prior year. The main driver there was the state revenues, which increased by about 2.3 million due to an increase in general education aid, based again on that formal allowance and study enrollment, and also an increase in special education aid as well. Local property tax revenue increased by about 1.7 million compared to the prior year, just based on the increase in the levy allocation for the general fund. And then the other revenues category increased by about 383,000. So, that category does include federal revenue, other local sources, and then also investment earnings are mixed in there as well. The result of that increase primarily did relate to investment income for fiscal year '25. Actually, we have the pie chart, just kind of breaking down those different percentages. So, pretty similar to the previous year again. State revenues making up the majority of the district's. General fund revenues at 63%, property taxes at 29%, and then that other category at 8%. Next, we have the general fund budget, the actual results for fiscal year '25. So, with the final adopted budget, there was a projected surplus of about 733,000 there at the bottom. The actual amounts, it's a surplus of about 1.7 million, so a positive variance there in the bottom right corner of about 937,000. Taking a look at the different pieces, the revenue side came in about 1.5 million or 3.5 million. or three point six percent over the final amended budget. The largest driver there was again from the state sources revenue, over budget by about eight hundred and ninety-five thousand, with special education aid coming in more than what was anticipated. Also, the other local revenues category was over budget by about five hundred and seventy-one thousand, with increased programming and program attendance for miscellaneous activities. And then also again, that investment income produced higher than the budget. On the expenditure side, that came in about five hundred and fifty-nine thousand or one point four percent over the final amended budget. One of the drivers there was the regular instruction category, which was about a hundred and fifty-five thousand over budget. Instructional services was about eighty-one thousand over budget. And then pupil support was about a hundred and ninety-five thousand over budget. And it looked like a lot of that related to salaries and wages along with equipment costs incurred during the year, so coming in a little bit higher than what you did. But again, overall, pretty, pretty steady and close to what was anticipated, both on the revenue and expenditure side, with minimal variances across the board. Here we have the kind of full picture or operations for the general fund for each of the past five years. Revenues increased by eleven point two percent, while expenditures increased by six point eight percent. So good to see the revenues kind of outpacing the expenditures from that side of things. The end result was an overall increase in fund balance of about two point one million. So going from about six point three million up to about eight point four million at the end of the year. The general fund had fund balance of about eight point four million. Of that amount, about fifty thousand represents non-spendable balances, so things in inventory and prepaid items. About ninety thousand in committed balances, a little over three million in assigned balances. Restricted fund balances totaled about one point three million. And then that left the unassigned fund balance at about three point nine million at the end of the year. And that was an increase of about five hundred thousand compared to the prior year. Here we have the financial position. So kind of taking a look at the unassigned fund balance in relation to cash investments. As you can see, each of the past five years, you have seen increases across the board for each of the categories. And those do tend to kind of go hand in hand. So kind of similar lines there for each of the past five years. Cash and investment balances did increase kind of due to those operations that we just looked at, along with recognition of the market value adjustments related to investments. Here we have the unrestricted fund balance as a percentage of expenditures, both for the district there in green, along with all school districts in blue. So traditionally, the district has kind of been lower than the average of Minnesota school districts, which doesn't necessarily mean that's a bad thing. Just kind of means you're spending your resources as you're comfortable there and within budget. Fund balance as a percent of expenditures for twenty twenty-five did increase to nineteen point eight percent. So up from eighteen point seven percent in the prior year, and up from fifteen point two percent kind of over that five-year trend. And then lastly, we have the special revenue fund. So starting with the food service fund, revenues here decreased by point eight percent. So just a slight drop there, while expenditures increased by six point one percent. The expenditures did exceed revenues by about a hundred and forty-nine thousand per year, which I do believe was anticipated, kind of spending down some of that fund balance. At the end of the year, you still had a healthy fund balance of a little over one million on the food service side of things. Expenditures did increase due to higher food costs, along with some increases in salaries and benefits as well, and some equipment purchases there. And then lastly, we have the community service fund, the five years presented here. For twenty twenty-five, revenues increased by about four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, due in large part to increased levy allocation, along with growing school age childcare program and higher participation in programming overall. While the expenditures increased by about four hundred and eighty-five thousand, just related to staffing to help with the increased growth in participation. The end result here was surplus of about fifty-four thousand for the year, which also increased fund balance for the community service fund from about two hundred and eighty-seven thousand up to a high of three hundred and ninety-four thousand, which is the highest of the five years presented. Good to see kind of that continued growth from year to year on that fund balance as well. I know COVID definitely impacted the community service fund maybe most of all. So good to see it rebounding quite well. And then lastly, just kind of have some net position numbers here. I won't go over those in too much detail, but kind of providing the overall financial position, kind of including both those long-term assets and long-term liabilities. So kind of mixing in capital asset items, things like the net pension liability, the OPEB liabilities, compensated absence, things of that nature. And we don't spend a lot of time analyzing these because they can fluctuate so much from year to year, especially some of those pension liabilities. If they change one assumption, it can change things by millions of dollars. So that's why we don't put a whole lot of focus on that. We're more so focused on the fund balance and the individual funds.
You've heard about HOSA tonight. That in my research, development of medical programs across high schools in Minnesota, HOSA is very prominent in very well-established programs. And I had a conversation with Jolene Perpel earlier this summer, I think before Jeff was in the teaching of students. And it was one of those things I said, you know what, maybe in a couple of years, we could bring that in. Let's get the program launched. And here we are, I saw a big smile on my face when I saw, they're coming tonight, and we're going to get going tonight. What a great compliment for our EMR, EMT, and nursing programs. They're going to have that outlet for students that really want to go deep into this kind of programming. They're going to have it already too. So that was a great thing. But tonight, I have three, three brief updates for you. The READ Act continues. We're going into our third year of the READ Act, and we continue to focus on ensuring every student is reading at grade level across pre-K all the way up to twelfth grade. And the work this year is still focused on training. And what is new this year is required professional literacy training. And we've started that. And we have a very, you know, healthy group, you know, almost sixty paraprofessionals that are touching kids, involved with their students with reading support. They are required to receive eight hours of training. So Natalie Gulo, our elementary literacy coach, and Robert Bevers, our high school reading intervention specialist, are leading those trainings. And we just had a four, a four-hour training with Robert, our workshop leader. And then Natalie is doing the same thing with her elementary parents. And again, it's very all-encompassing to ensure anyone that is working with kids who are on reading support is getting the proper training. Also, in the second bullet, you've heard me talk about the letters training, and that is a two-year commitment. And we have thirty-seven elementary teachers now. They're going into their second year. And it's going to be about eighty hours of literacy training that they're going to go into. So we were really strong in area of literacy before. We'll be even deeper by the time you're here. And that training will be the entire year. They'll have our last, their last session, and our last school trip. But they're doing great. And then the last piece of training that is coming, and we're awaiting, is secondary teacher training, which will be really our high school English teachers. The English department, they know that's coming. We are waiting for details from the Department of Ed. And that'll be something that'll be our focus next year. And that'll be, again, part of the READ Act. Some curriculum updates for you tonight. We have started a full K-12 math review as part of our curriculum review cycle. And math is up. And I give you just a visual of the new academic standards in mathematics. And the main thing I want to point out is on the right-hand side of that visual, they are bringing in what are called math principles. And basically, we think about higher-order thinking, we think about modeling, we think about problem solving, but they, I'm sorry, these are math practices rather. These are things that are going to call out in the benchmarks. Where before, we assumed kids were doing these things. Now they're going to be called out, which is, which I think is great. And then under in the lower right-hand corner, dimension two, every new math standard benchmark will be tied to a real-life application. You'll notice some, so maybe some new things in there where there is financial literacy, computer science, and then all of the four core academic standards will be tied in some way to what they call Minnesota Tribal Nation Context. So the, we are just starting this work with the review cycle. And over on the right-hand side, something that is new, there's more emphasis on data and statistics and probability. That'll be something at the high school level in particular, we'll need to grapple with. To think about, is this more data statistics? How do we deliver that? What does that look like? All high schools will be grappling with that. No answer tonight about that. It's more awareness, this is coming. And then the deadline for this implementation is the twenty-seven, twenty-eight school year. And then with that comes in the spring of twenty twenty-eight, a new MCA four assessment aligning standards. So we're in a great place. This is the year just to learn, think, reflect, look at our curriculums with the idea that if we need to make changes in curriculum, that'll come in two years. And then we'll be ready to go for the twenty-seven, twenty-eight school year. The other piece around curriculum updates will be the new twenty twenty-one social studies standards. And this is the year when we need to finish that work of embedding that into our social studies courses. One thing that I would share about these newest standards in twenty twenty-one, where fourth grade was all about the countries of, or the younger, the states across the United States and the capitals. You'll notice over here on the right-hand side, fourth grade has changed to contemporary world is the term. So it's a much more global approach to what kids are learning in fourth grade. And then the other one that is changing a lot is in eighth grade. Eighth grade was about different regions of the world. Now what they're moving into is what's called, it's called a comparative model. So take the concept of poverty. Now in eighth grade, they need to find three different countries and analyze poverty and the impact on that population in three different countries. Now let's talk about productivity. Same thing, pick three countries and choose and analyze, reflect how this particular topic is impacting in different countries. It's a shift. So we're already in discussion, talks about what needs change, in particular in fourth grade and eighth grade. But these are our new standards, these are our benchmarks. So the work that we do is we talk about what's changing. We think about what are the curriculums out there? What are the publishers doing in these areas? And that'll be our work between now and the school year, to do this realignment for the coming, this coming school year.
So do the new standards exist yet?
Next year.
Next year, yes, okay.
This is, this is the year to do the embedding, address the changes, address any gaps, and then we're ready to go next fall. And then the last, last thing I want to share with you tonight, some, some great news that we learned today. And we had a hunch last week with an email from the Department of Ed. We are now the recipient of twenty thousand dollars in Perkins funding to start supporting our machining program. And, and the total Perkins dollar amount, which is federal dollars, that we received this year is around thirty-one thousand dollars. Last year is about twelve thousand. So this is the work that we're doing, working with the Department of Ed, letting them know, hey, machining is coming, EMR, EMT is coming, nursing is coming. These federal dollars support the expenditure, the purchasing of this expensive equipment. So already this year, we have twenty thousand dollars we'll be spending. It could be spot rollers, grinders, drill presses. And then as we go into the fiscal year twenty-seven, there'll be even more, a lot more, that we will be purchasing. But where we can get support that's a hundred percent in reimbursement for up to twenty thousand dollars on these pieces of equipment. So we just got that word today. So it's a really good thing to happen. So just to wrap up, just a reminder, we'll have our first quarterly school board meeting on Friday, November seventh. I'll send you all a calendar invite. We're going to start out talking about artificial intelligence. We're going to talk about MCA four assessments. There'll be, I know we'll do some discussion around career tech, courses and planning, and a number of other things. So if you're available on the seventh, we'll be at seven thirty for that, for that meeting. We will start out, I guess, as we lead into that, we'll start out about, talking about the construction phasing schedule. The last time I was here, we touched on a few of these areas. And after, I guess, further investigation into the building, there's been a couple modifications to this phasing schedule, which we feel we've had a lot of contractor input as we got into this and saw some of the conditions in some of the areas. We've spent a lot of time over this last month with different trade partners, bringing them in, looking at the areas, and trying to make sure that what we have here we're comfortable with as we move forward. With that being said, as we get into phase one, some of the science areas, those are looking at November turnover dates on the lower level. That November tenth date is the plus two.
I think November tenth is the main level interior.
Yeah.
So I think that's.
That, yeah, I'm sorry, I was ahead of myself on that. That main level interior, on phase one, we have furniture getting delivered on the twenty-sixth of November. So we'll be working through that. The other areas, so maybe when we get through the, some of the updates, you'll see footings and foundations have started on the, on the administration area. We're looking at completion dates in there in April, along with some of the media center. We've adjusted as we move south, planned south on the lower level. Some of those areas to the south will be completed next summer. Probably, if I can go to the board, is that maybe easier?
Sure. What, what do we teach?
English. But I think because there's science rooms opening, people can shift around and maybe this is where she's telling me she's going to put in a hallway. So I don't know.
So some of the big area, I think some of the biggest changes on here that we talked about last time is the biggest area that we saw, maybe some concerns with what they had for durations of the original project, were related to areas, obviously, the storm shelter, and then that of the little theater. So as we started looking at what it's going to take, not only to demo this out, open up to get footings and foundations in at that lower level, but then also probably a big piece of this was the demo that it took to remove the concrete, the like mezzanine floor out of here. We're shoring now down to first floor to support that shoring, to get the concrete out of the, out of the mezzanine, all while maintaining access through this ramp. Looking to complete next summer, the shop area, the band, the cafeteria and serving areas with the storm shelter turning over in March. And then December with the small theater. We are hoping that this, we're showing this at the same time. We think that there's opportunities to likely get finished out of the lower level first. And one of the other coordination pieces is knowing that this is a new fitness center, maintaining access through the existing. While this is being built, there's some utilities that need to run through that space. So we'll coordinate that work with the district. We may be opening up some of the areas to get utilities through, then putting it back in a temporary situation until this is open. And then we'll take this offline and repurpose that.
Where, where are the new programs going? I don't know if you can answer that, or Kevin, like the construction's happening over here, right? Where, and then so where are the construction, the machining, and the nursing programs going? Just kind of curious.
I think what you see in salmon here, that's where, that's going to be opening up November tenth. That'll be some of our special education programs, but also a couple more of our English classrooms. Right now, we have some programming going on in the PAC that will find classrooms, finish off those classrooms. By, right after Thanksgiving break, we'll have the remaining darker gray, which is science and a couple math classrooms that will open up. So the full lower level will be open. And then right after winter break, when kids come back, we'll have this whole complete academic wing, both upper and lower will be. academic wing, both upper and lower will be open. Probably right before winter break.
Social classes in there?
Yeah. So, then the admin area that comes in then will be in April. Looking at the machining, the machining, the woodshop, the engineering, the robotics program being a summer slam, the English or the art and music band, summer slam, the nursing will start in the spring and turnovers. So, those areas will all be ready to go next fall.
Is the construction classes, aren't those already started this year, this fall?
We do have construction trades going, but we're able to use the woodshop for that.
Okay.
So, really, when we get, starting out next year, most of our construction is really gonna be designated in this courtyard on the lower level, upper level, in this pocket going on to the little theater. All of this around it will have been completed. There's gonna be some tile work that has to be done that we have to coordinate in the construction.
So, the bright red, the lower level is the...
Fitness, athletic wing.
What, what classes are affected like on the upper level by the bright red?
We have courtyard there, we have part of our cafeteria, we have a couple special classroom.
Okay.
So, how, now that we're into this, we're talking about finishing some of this, which is great, how, how do you advise us to read this to the extent that there's a difference between an occupancy date and a completion date? Are we talking about like, I'm thinking about like that, the exterior walls? That doesn't necessarily need to be all finished before our students are actually inside the classrooms, right?
For which area or...
Well, I was just thinking about like the Phase 1 and Phase 4, where it's the exterior part of it of those new classrooms. Or, can we...
Yes.
So, reading the schedule here, it gives a date there, is that the date that they're, they're occupying those, those rooms or the date that they're actually done, done with everything, including all the exterior work?
Those dates are that they're occupying, like right now on the science wing, windows are going in, brick is starting, I think the brick is starting tomorrow out there. So, we'll be chasing that through on the exterior fairly quickly. So, the timing of that should be, we should be there and where we need to be on all of these. And that goes for the, and we'll see a little bit of it when we go through the updated pictures, but even the admin area, there was some issues early on with some shoring and then some footing, foundation things that were some, were some modifications. Those, the helical piers will all be installed, footings and foundations are started, steel erection we should be looking at next week. So, we'll start to see all that come together as well in that light green area here shortly.
Okay, so it says, the light green says April, right, if I'm reading.
Yeah.
For the admin area.
Yeah.
Means they really won't be in there until April?
Yeah.
Okay.
April 26th, or, I'm sorry, April 2026.
Yes.
Yes. I said before, was it obvious before?
No, that was...
Or it's August 2nd, April of 2026.
Yes.
That's the phase.
Any other questions on this?
We'll be putting this up on our website for families, and we'll be doing the communication also.
So, is this all updated then?
Yeah.
Are you feeling a lot of questions regarding this, the timeline?
No, I would, I would really compliment, first of all, the open spaces that have opened, people really appreciate, they're excited about what's continuing to open up. I think one thing that's, one thing, I mean, we chose to do a remodel because if you build brand-new, this would be about double the cost of what it is. And so, we're able to get incredible value for really updating our whole high school at, at a much less of an expense to the community. And when I look at, you know, you heard Edie speak here, and that's direct testament to staff that are creating and normalizing and putting a lot of intentional efforts so that we can keep on hitting benchmarks, but also speaks to our student body. I mean, the flexibility that they show, shows to our partnership with KAA of trying to minimize certain impacts, takes a ton of coordination. And so, a lot of people are really working hard, showing some grace, flexibility, but also being concentrated on the important things and to all different parties coming together, appreciate it. I think the fuel that engines it, you know, when I talk about staff, you have different people that haven't experienced their classroom yet. If you don't have your classroom yet, you're gonna get one of those exterior classrooms, likely with some of those windows, and I can, I just promise, just in the, these months, you're gonna have, I mean, the natural light that's gonna be pouring in that area, I'm just thrilled about. And so, no, I, I haven't, and yet, I know day-to-day, there's different things that are happening that people are problem-solving and working through, and our kids have done a great job, our staff have led the way.
Some of the updates through Phase 1, you can start to see the exterior coming together. The second picture on the right, we've got window frames and glass being installed. As we just mentioned earlier, brick and some of the exterior finishes are scheduled to be on, get started here this week. Inside, the steel stairs and those two stairwells are onsite and being installed. And there's a lot of mechanical, electrical rough-ins kinda happening throughout, along with some drywall and, as you can see, partitions and walls being framed. So, they're making good progress in there since the topping slab was poured just a week and a half or so ago. So, we're making a lot of, lot of, getting a lot of positive momentum through that area. As we get into the administration wing, you can see the equipment in the back, that's, those are the helical piers going in, other footings and foundations are being put in in backfield. We have some more, you know, there's obviously some more concrete and stuff going in, but we're, we'll shortly behind this have the concrete steel being erected in this area So, in that main level, the main level classrooms on the addition, again, there's mechanical, electrical going in, walls being framed, getting ready to start closing up some of And this is those classroom wings in that Phase 5 area. As we're getting finishes and stuff put in, flooring's starting to go in, ceilings, all that's, all the finish is kinda that last couple weeks of work for new year. Any questions on any of that?
So, obviously, we feel good about the near-term deadlines.
Yeah, yeah.
The November and the December.
Yep, yep. And I feel like we're in a good spot as we come out of the ground on the...
Brian's mom, or Brian's wife wants to know if we're...
Yeah, yeah.
Anything that'd be done.
I know, I'm, I'm sure, I know this conversation's just kinda hurt it. So, we're, we're hoping that we're here this time and we've got a schedule that makes sense to everybody who moves.
One question, the...
Yeah. So, I, I guess I don't know if you have them in your packets. So, we took bids here on the 9th and the 14th, the first bid was for the primary school projects. And those came in great. As we're sitting through the bid opening for that project, you'll see the work scopes that were bid out here. We had just over 50 bidders submitted a bid on this project. So, what we're, I guess, Kevin, in the past, have you went through the low bidders on each one or just the totals? Do you wanna go through that? You should have asked that before, but... Where we were at with the budget, construction budget, we were just about $6 million. So, our low bids came in at 4.1 million, a number of mechanical, electrical bids, and I think that a lot was attributed to the fact that we were able to, working with WOLD, get some of the piping that was in the, that we saw in the tunnels at Grandview out and put up in the ceiling, which a lot seemed to bring out a lot more bidders. There was a lot more competition through the mechanical, electrical. So, we benefited from that on bid day, allowing us to, what we're asking for today is to approve the alternate for the added window work. Also, for a total approval tonight for the primary schools, 4.2, 4,254,442.
So, a couple, couple things further. This bid opening was, was about two weeks ago. I think in talking to Kraus Anderson, they feel good about the low bidders. There are a lot of your contractors they've worked with before. We were pleased by the competitiveness of these bids, we're pleased with some of the design that was put in place. For example, at Shirley Hills, we have a lot of tunnels where things were chased, they found a way to bring it out of some of those tunnels, which made it more attractive work for people to bid on. We think that directly attributed to more competition, which then helped, I think, these bid results. And so, these came out very favorably. Not only did we have contractors that they would recommend it, also financially came in favorably. So, for the primary project, our alternate was for working on our windows and our cafeteria at Shirley Hills, and we're excited about that aspect as well. One thing that our, in our original bond estimate, that wasn't part of it, was improving the media centers. And we were able to work on making some improvements in that common space. So, at both of our primaries in the 2011 bond, we were able to address the classroom spaces. Media was lighter. At that time, it was 95 that we actually did improvements to the media center. So, believe it or not, that seemed newer at that point, and now it's showing that, that would be an update that would help our students.
Be able to do those.
Yeah, that's, so, feel really good about the expanded, expanded scope, where it's directed, how these bids came in and that we'd accept the alternate. Then we had our stadium bid opening that was a week ago, almost a week, it was Tuesday.
Tuesday?
And again, large number of bidders for the project.
Yeah, almost 100 bidders for the stadium project. We are recommending a ward of all the work scopes with the exception of roofing and the track surfacing. We received numbers for both, but we only see, we only received one number for the roofing that appeared to be the full entire scope, including roofing and metal panels. We're just going through that process of vetting them to make sure that they have the scope and that we're comfortable with the number that they provided. We had two bidders, I will say that, one didn't bid the metal panels in it, so they were considerably less. So, we just, we, we talked with Kevin, and we're gonna take a little time just to go through and vet to make sure that's, that they have the right number. If so, we'll come back on November 10th and ask for approval of that. If not, we'll have the discussion if we're gonna rebid that roofing number, which we still have plenty of time to do that in the process. Similar situation with the, the track coating. We had two contractors bid on it. The question that came up after the bids were open was the product that was specified and the amount of experience that the low bidder might have had installing that product. So, we're looking for references from them or experiences they've had applying this certain product. So, again, I think as we go through that process and vet them and the second bidder, we likely will bring those back on the, on the 10th of November for approval. All other bids, like I said, we had just about 100 bidders propose on this project. So, what we're recommending today without the roofing and the track surfacing bid, that we approved the base bid of $10,620,609. And also on here for approval of the alternates, which were the lighting for Field 789, the, the team building and storage, team and storage building, and then the grading and prep for the turf that would be installed on those, the Field 789 as well. And that alternate price was $1,864,436 for a total approval recommendation tonight of
And remind me again, what, what were we thinking of originally on this? For the literary cost, planning cost?
For the alternates?
Well, I guess for the...
For the stadium, you give them a reference number for the primary?
We were 11, 11.4 on the base bid and roughly 3.1 on the alternates.
And so...
Did you come in...
Under on the alternate and within a percent and a half, I believe, on the, on the base bid from our estimate.
Including the roofing and the...
Yeah, yeah.
And one thing we're doing, Ralph, one thing we're doing separately or directly at the school is the actual purchase of the artificial turf, correct, Kevin? Yeah. So, two things will come to the board directly, either in the November, the December board meeting, one will be for the turf itself, and then the other is for the scoreboard for the stadium. Those will be on state contract, and we'll bring those separate to you. For those two products, we wanted to make sure it wasn't, that, that we were able to negotiate, interview those based on safety or value versus just have it be lowest bidder. And so, we were able to continue to move those conversations along. And I, I believe that, I really think that the November board meeting you'll have for turf and scoreboard.
And those numbers now reflected in your report, but they are in the budget.
Overall budget.
The budget for, yeah.
And the, and the numbers that we went over in the meeting last week, there's no, in your, it was prior to your recommendation for the bidders.
Yes.
All fundamental items, other than the things you broke out separately tonight, are still unchanged and can be voted on as recommended by KAA.
Correct, yeah.
Remind me that the alternate to do lighting, that was 789, is that actual lighting or is it just prep in the...
No, it's the actual lighting for...
Including the stadium.
Because the bids came in, what do you think, are they...
Yeah. I can't remember, it was...
A whole enchilada.
Light bulbs and everything.
Light bulbs and a whole enchilada.
I, I think, a couple, couple thoughts. The primary projects are gonna be done over summer of '26. And so, like Grandview, it's gonna really be concentrated over those summer months. For the stadium and then Field 789, that's gonna start when we can start in the spring. And then, it's projected to go till November. And so, if you can tell on the stadium how many rain days we get, we could probably tell you the other of it, but that's right now what the school is appearing to be. With all of our projects, we want as many current kids to be able to use the spaces. It's just, I don't know how long the seasons for all of our kids are gonna go, but obviously November is gonna be tough for some of the kids with fall activities. To be spring, it will be up and, up and going for sure. And so, we're, one, these are our last two bid packages out. I think it's a compliment to the facilities committee, it's first of all, the community passing it, but the facilities committee, the compliment to WOLD and KAA, all the design groups. In each design group, we expanded the value of each project. And we have the ribbon cutting for the tennis courts. And how we, how we took that project on, you look at what we were able to do at the middle school and expand how we incorporated some of the specialty classrooms into that project. High school, multiple angles of that project, a lot of angles of that project, really expanded. Now, at 789, to be able to put the stadium west of the Thaler Building, to maximize the space on the north end for parking and future space, to then move the JV baseball field over to 789, where originally in our bond, we talked about turfing the infield, to now share that, that softball benefits, baseball benefits, but also soccer, football, lacrosse, that we have a multi-use field. That was made possible because of, large part, district financing. That was made possible because of a generous donor, it was made possible because of some aggressive writing of grants that we hope that we can continue to secure. But clearly, the district finances of being able to expand what was gonna be an infield for baseball to be a multi-use space, and that's consistent with our project of how can we bring maximum value to the space that we have? So, now it is that softball and baseball are gonna have that turf field, but because we're gonna roll the out, the... But because we're going to roll the, the fencing on the outfield fence, then in the other seasons, that can be used for football, soccer and lacrosse. Just really smart design, smart use of space. It's going to really greatly benefit our spring activities, has just a lot of incredible value. Really made possible from the beginning step of saying, can that stadium fit west of Thaler, which is a much better spot? So I'm, I'm really proud of the design. I'm proud of everyone going along with how we can bring maximum value here. And to be at the end of these bid scopes is really exciting because now, now we just have to go on the project to finish them. Bring that full circle to where we began. We, I'm excited to be turning over some of these next classrooms November seventh and then right after Thanksgiving. I'm excited for our kids, most of all our staff that are working through this, that there's a little bit more space. But as people work in these new spaces, as they're happy with that first phase, this one is going to start connecting people to the natural light. I'm just really excited to take down some of those walls and allowing us to benefit from that. And so really, really good bid results, a great effort to get here, incredible thing.